Call the rule.
Council President Leita, Council Pro Tem Posey.
Here.
Councilmember Sweeney.
Here.
Councilmember Driver.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Present.
Councilmember Middlebrooks.
Here.
Councilmember McClintock.
Here.
All right, I'll ask the clerk to deification and Councilor Driver to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, I just thank you for us being able to come here tonight. I thank you for guiding the leaders and the decisions that they need to make. And I thank you for your protection over Hoover and the blessings that you give us. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will turn it over to the mayor for recognitions and announcements. None tonight, no way. All right, well, we'll get started with, okay, okay, okay.
Good evening. Okay, okay. Okay, so tonight I wanted to provide an update on our monthly revenues and to give you a feeling for where we stand for the five months ended for this fiscal year. On the next slide, Wendy, we have our major revenues report. And by the way, this is really nice. I don't know who fixed this thing, but now I have a screen that I can actually see. But this gives us an idea of where we stand with all of our major groupings of revenue. Five out of 12 months means that we're roughly 41%, 42% of the way through the year. And as you see, we have two categories which we totally expect to be at the majority of the budget for the year, and that's our real property taxes. We're sitting at 95% collections for the year based on budget. And then also the gross receipts and franchise taxes. In fact, there's only one category that is riding a little bit lower than that 41 percentile of budget, and that is our lodging taxes. And I do have another slide that I'm going to show you a little bit later to show you where we stand for the five months ended with our lodging taxes compared to prior years. But the rest of these categories appear to be tracking ahead of where we are budget-wise in the year. So on the next slide, I have some what I would call good, conservatively good news related to our sales, sales and use tax and also our SSUT. At the last monthly report, I had told you that we were seeing really flat sales tax collections, 1% to 2% of an increase, and that was true both for the month of January, but also when we looked at for the whole, for the four months over the last three years, that comparison was still riding at that 1% to 2% percentile level. So we had a very strong February, as you can see, compared to last year's $7.8 million in collections, we had $8.5 million. That's an 8.7% increase in our regular sales and use tax. And on the next slide, which shows our SSUT trends, you can see that this also had a very strong February. Again, talked about this last month, we're seeing a shift from our normal brick and mortar sales tax collections to online sales, and that's to be expected as many of us do tend to shop online. But February increased 16.7% from the prior year February. So combined these two categories, and I'll show you that later, a little bit over 3%. I think it's 3.7% combined increase for the year. On the next slide, our real property tax trends. The month of February here showed a bit of a decrease, a 4.7% decrease over the prior February. But as you look at these years, we see that December through February are our primary months that we tend to make these collections. And so that dark blue bar which shows 2022, we can see in 2022, we collected a big amount in December and smaller amounts in January and February. But this year, which is light blue bar, we had a healthy amount in December and then a much bigger amount in January as compared to prior years. And then we're kind of tracking a little bit lower for February, but we are up for the year with our real property tax for the first five months as well. On the next slide, our license and permit fees. So our license and permit fees again posted an increase 7.5% over the prior year's February. That's compared to in January, it was a 6.4%. So we're seeing a trend of increases month to month with our license and permits. And then with our gross receipts, so gross receipts on the next slide is again another category that tends to have a heavy concentration in January and February. So we were up 26% in January from last year to this year, down 57.8% in February. But when we look at the, we'll look at the annual trends for that, we're still moderately up this year in gross receipts. So starting with the next slide, I thought it just would be helpful kind of to see kind of the linear trend for each of these major taxes to kind of see for the four-year trends for the first five months of the year, how are we shaping up? So sales and use tax, again, a more than 3% increase for the first five months from '24 to '25. And then the next slide, SSUT, a bigger increase. That one was, that one was 12.5% for the first five months. So again, when we put these two things together, we're looking at 3.7% increase for the first five months in both sales and use and SSUT, which I found to be encouraging to me. I would like for it to be more, and I hope that the trend continues. Real property on the next slide, again showing for the last four years, the first five months of each of these years, we have a nice steady increase of 2.7%. And then our licenses and permits is one where we're seeing a little bit of a drop-off. So we have a 2% decrease from 2024. And just looking at this, we see from '22, we were at $7.3 million, '23, $8.9. And since '23, we've kind of just been gradually decreasing there. As you know, in the prior budget, at the budget ask, one of the positions that I asked for was a revenue auditor, and we talked about manpower issues that we had had. So we were able to actually fill that position that y'all approved, and we had that individual start at the beginning of this month. But our plan is to be a friendly city that helps our businesses renew their licenses as we uncover businesses that are operating without a renewed business license or without a business license. The next slide and the last slide shows that gross receipts and franchise tax four-year trend. So really bumped up in '24 and '25, hitting around the $8.5 million mark for both of these years. Again, this is one of the categories where we have most of our tax receipts that have been collected for the year, but we still plan to have and hope to have a small, some more of these revenues trickling throughout the year. But overall, from '24 to '25, for the five months, increased by 1.1%. And I think that's it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Questions, okay.
Questions.
I have one question. You said lodging tax is down. Any forecast, why?
That was something that was curious, and you had asked for a breakdown of the lodging tax and bed fees. I think what we saw was that from '20, I can't remember if it was '22 or '23, and I'm referring now to lodging tax information that I had shared with Steve McClintock earlier today, looking for a breakdown between the actual tax the city collects and the bed fee that the city also gets. And so it is curious to me as to why our lodging taxes would be decreasing since 2023. I don't have a, I don't have a vision to that, but I want to look into it.
I'll tell you the reason why I asked for that information. There's an article that came out Thursday in AL.com, and it was about how the MSA, I don't know if y'all know this, I didn't know this until someone showed me, the MSA has changed from the Birmingham Hoover Metro to the Birmingham, Alabama metropolitan area. In fact, you can't find Hoover as a principal city in that MSA. And I'd sent something to y'all over the weekend, guys, and I also talked to April Danielson, our attorney, about how that can be rectified because I think anything like that, I don't know why it was done that way, but I think anything like that hurts our city. Obviously Hoover has grown the past 20 years, Birmingham has not. Birmingham's dropped from number one to number four in population, and I think Hoover should do everything it can. So that's why I was asking for that information because I was shocked to find out that our MSA had gotten changed, and that's done by the Office of OMB. So I already texted or emailed either Senator Britt, Tuberville's office, Gary Palmer's office to see what they can do to help us with that. And I know April Danielson is working on that as well, so that's why I asked for that information.
I wonder if any of that has to do with us straddling two different counties, too, so.
Maybe, maybe.
And we haven't tried to parse that out between counties, but it is something I want to look at because it does seem curious to me that that would go down.
But thank you for the information, I really appreciate it.
Sure.
Yeah. First of all, I'm very appreciative that we've gotten back to a point where we get the monthly financial updates, so kudos to you and your department on getting there. The revenue trends is definitely helpful for us to forecast. However, I do have a request for future months. This is only telling half of the story. So in future monthly reports, could we start including cost?
Yes.
Where we are on cost for each.
Yes. I'm hoping to resume the monthly reporting that includes both revenues and expenditures year-to-date within the next month.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, President Pro Tem, do you have examples of why the, I want to say the use and sale tax increased in February versus the adjacent years?
I don't, I don't. We don't know. I mean, we receive that information, you know, through the state, so we collect those taxes and we collect what is submitted on my Alabama tax. So I don't, I mean, we haven't tried to break it down by retailer, is that what you mean? Like to kind of look at?
It's whether it is restaurant-based or?
It's curious because February is a short month, too.
Yeah, it'd be nice to, but it's challenging to kind of verify what category you believe it is, or?
We could try to look at that.
Okay, just?
We could get that breakdown for you if you would like it, surely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, I just wanted to mention that we, of course, we dodged a really, really bad storm this weekend, but we went, we took it very, very seriously and had all of our people coming in. They came in Monday, excuse me, Friday night and stayed through the duration of the storm. And it was funny, not funny, but coincidental that Hoover was kind of the last hurrah before it left this area in terms of a target area. I think Greystone was probably the last one. But I appreciate the way our police and fire, public works, engineering, so many of our folks came together and spent a good bit of time in our emergency operations center being prepared for the absolute worst. But what, you know, what I gathered over this time, particularly with all the forecast and the real destructive forecast that was given to us, it put a lot of fear in people in the right way, and that is to be prepared. But what I also saw is that, like many others in the city, when these storms occur during the day, we have buildings that we can go to, we have City Hall, we have the library, we have just different places that give you some degree of comfort that you could in a moment's notice or in two or three or four, maybe an hour beforehand, go and be there. We've got one place in our city that's a shelter, a storm shelter, and that's because that's the only place that we have something similar to mobile homes, and that's the RV park. And so for years, the Met has served us that. It's not necessarily a tornado shelter, but just the fact that the way it's built and the corridors and things of that nature gives us the ability to shelter folks should that occur, and it's used often, and it's used by many other people in the surrounding neighborhoods as well. So I think that just as we reflect back, and again, I found myself like everyone else living in a house that doesn't have a basement and planning and trying to go somewhere that I may need to go, just like a lot of other folks did. I think that it's important that we look ahead now, and what I want to do is to have our fire chief head up a project that will identify future shelters. Now, that may mean us investing in building shelters, it may be us partnering with the schools in some way, it may mean us opening up city buildings that we have and manning those. But we're a city that stretches a long way from one end to the other, so it will be an expense, you know, it can be an expensive project, but something I think that's important. And there may be some ways that we can do it that it's not so expensive, and that would be if we can use existing buildings that in some way could qualify for that. So be looking for that. I think it's something we will join with the Jefferson County Emergency Management Agency as well as Shelby County EMA, and I think we need to put some real effort towards that so that we don't, we're not faced with that again. So just want to make that report, thank you.
Thank you. Before we move into our agenda, I want to recognize former councilwoman Donna Mazur, former councilmember Joe Reeves, and former council president Jean Smith. And in honor of Jean Smith, we did not have a work session this last time, so this will be the long-form meeting where we hear from department heads, and as we take each object, and we'll start with the first thing on the regular agenda, which is the payment of bills.
Motion to approve payment of bills.
Second. I have a motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Second item is the minutes from the February 27th, 2025, and March 3rd, 2025 meetings.
Motion to approve the minutes without review.
Second.
I have a motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Number three is resolution number 8396-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution approves a 020 restaurant retail liquor alcohol license for Fuquumon One, Inc., doing business as Fuquumon 280, located at 210 Douglas Baker Boulevard, Suite 100, Hoover, Alabama.
Motion to approve resolution number 8396-25.
Second.
I have a motion to second, Ms. Dickerson, everything is in order with this item?
That's correct, there are no issues with this from the police department or from the zoning department.
Any questions from the council on this item? Any from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Item number four, resolution number 8397-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution approves a 160 special retail more-than-30-days alcohol license for Inverness Bev LLC, doing business as Inverness Country Club, located at 1 Country Club Drive, Hoover, Alabama.
Motion to approve resolution number 8397-25.
Second.
I have a motion to second, Ms. Dickerson, like the last one, is everything in order with this item?
There are no issues with this request from the police department or the zoning department.
All right, any questions from the council? Any from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Resolution number five, I mean, item number five, resolution 8398-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Birmingham Water Works Board to install two fire hydrants at Black Ridge South Phase Three.
Motion to approve resolution number 8398-25.
Second.
I have a motion to second, Chief Bentley.
Thank you, council, everything's in order. The Fire Marshal's office has reviewed these, and now everything's in order.
Okay, any questions from the council?
President Pro Tem, mark my abstention from this item.
Yes, sir, Mr. Murphy will extend him from this item. Any questions from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Resolution number 8380A-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Brokado to execute an agreement, an amendment to the facility use agreement with the Birmingham Host Committee 2025 World Police and Fire Games for use of certain city facilities during the World Police and Fire Games.
Motion to approve resolution number 8380A-25.
Second.
Motion to second, Ms. Cobal.
Yes, as mentioned, this is an amendment to the World Police and Fire Games agreement that you all approved on February 17th. Since then, the organizers are no longer able to use the baseball facility that they had confirmed, so we've worked it out for them to use the Hoover Met for the baseball competition and also the Inverness Nature Park for disc golf.
Any questions for Ms. Cobal on this item? Any from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Item number seven, resolution 8400-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025, as shown on Exhibit A, to allow for the purchase of a K-9 box for a police Tahoe in the amount of $8,045.
Motion to approve resolution number 8400-25.
Second.
I have a motion to second, Exo Fountain.
Good evening, council. This motion is because this vehicle is purchased with drug seizure funds, therefore we have to use drug seizure funds to equip it, so we need to move $8,045 in order to do that for the K-9 box.
Any questions for Exo Fountain? Any from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it. You'll hang out with us for a second, resolution number 8401-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025, as shown on Exhibit A, to allow for purchase of various items to support the operations of the Hoover Police Department in the amount of $290,000.
Motion to approve resolution number 8401-25.
Second.
A motion to second, Exo Fountain, tell us about this item.
Okay, if you remember, Dwayne did the budget in September, we were asking for around $250,000 for the jail cameras. We didn't get that, therefore we're using our inmate fund revenues to do that. So this money of that is $243,000 for the cameras. We're also sending some applicants to the police academy. We asked for that in the budget as well, that got cut, so we're using the inmate funds for that, too. So all total of the expenses is $290,000 roughly.
Any questions in council?
I would like to add, this doesn't require any additional funding from the general fund, there are offsetting revenues that come in from housing federal inmates that are supporting this expenditure.
Questions? Any questions from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Resolution number 8402-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Brokado to execute an agreement with Axon Enterprise, Inc., for a dash camera for one Intrediction Tahoe for a yearly cost of $2,456.88.
Motion to approve resolution number 8402-25.
Second.
I have a motion to second, tell us about this item.
This is for a dash cam that we use in the Intrediction Tahoe, says $12,284 for a five-year contract, and we're asking for that so we can put the dash cam in the Intrediction Tahoe. That's being funded by the $290,000 that you guys just approved.
Any questions? Any from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Resolution number 8403-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Brokado to execute a three-year agreement with Vision Security Technologies for an upgrade to the Hoover City Jail server system for an amount not to exceed $98,616.89.
Motion to approve resolution number 8403-25.
Second.
A motion to second, tell us about this item.
So this is the jail camera upgrade that we just talked about that we agreed to fund with the $290,000, this is for the servers for that upgrade.
Any questions from the council on this item? Any from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Moving on to the next page, resolution number 8404-25, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Brokado to execute a three-year agreement with Vision Security Technologies for an upgrade to the Hoover City Jail camera upgrades in an amount not to exceed $134,127.85.
Motion to approve resolution number 8404-25.
Second.
A motion to second, tell us about this item.
This is for actual cameras in the jail that we're upgrading.
All right, any questions on this item? Any from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it. And your last item, resolution number 8405-25, Mr. Corley.
This authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with Vision Security Technologies for installation of new cameras at the Hoover Public Safety Center in an amount not to exceed
Motion to approve resolution number 8405-25.
Second.
A motion to second, tell us about these cameras.
These are six cameras that have been identified as not working, they're high liability cameras, meaning that we need these cameras, we need to get them repaired now, so that's what we're doing, and this is the last of the motions.
All right, any questions on this item? Any from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
President Pro Tem, just one question, no, we, police department suggested and spent a lot of cameras when I rode a beat a couple weeks ago, stopped by the jail, did have an inmate or resident there, I'd say that, that passed out. So just imagine while they're doing their work and checking people in, they have them in certain livable units, and they can't watch every step all the way, so they rely on those cameras to be able to see every corner of that facility. So I did want to say that a lot was read off, but I appreciate all the work you guys did.
Thank you, and thank you for your support.
All right, moving on to the engineering portion of the meeting, resolution number 8406-25.
This resolution amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2025, for drainage improvements in Phase Two of the stormwater assessment inventory, as shown on Exhibit A.
Motion to approve resolution number 8406-25.
Second.
I have a motion to second, Mr. Reeves, tell us about these items.
Yes, sir, thank you. This request is to amend the fiscal year '25 budget to re-allocate the remaining funds from the projects as shown on the screen there. There are five projects that are completed, and we are in desperate need of some funds in our miscellaneous drainage funds. So we thought this would be a good time to put this money together and move it into our miscellaneous drainage fund, and also fund a Phase Two inventory assessment, condition inventory for the Green Valley area. This Phase Two inventory assessment will help us develop a future maintenance schedule, assist us with identifying and budgeting future capital project needs in that area, provide us with a GIS-based location and condition assessment of the stormwater infrastructure in this area. The total amount from all five projects being reallocated is $483,398. The Phase Two assessment inventory will be limited not to exceed $200,000, with the remaining $283,398 going to the miscellaneous drainage account.
Any questions from the council on these items?
Yes, Mr. Pro Tem, just to be clear, the amounts that you're reallocating, those are from completed projects that were under budget?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Mr. Reeves, can you just better explain to me what the funds are used for for miscellaneous drainage, and then, I'm sorry, go over the Phase Two stormwater assessment?
Yes, sir, I will.
What's the goal on that one more time?
The miscellaneous drains account basically funds our day-to-day maintenance and routine repairs. So if we have an inlet that's damaged or a pipe in the right of way that needs to be repaired or replaced, we use that account to do that. And it's normally set at $300,000 per year. This year, we've had some opportunities and we've expended that, those funds.
Thank you. And what was the overall goal for the Phase Two stormwater assessment?
The, well, actually, I have a map, and I apologize, I'll just pass these down so you can see that. We have the proposed assessments mapped out into six zones. We completed Zone One, which is in the Greystone area, in 2024. So the purpose of this is help us, really to help us get an inventory and assessment of the conditions of the stormwater infrastructure in this area. of the stormwater infrastructure in this area.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
One more thing, Mr. President, Chris and his team, they will be presenting next council meeting regarding stormwater, and this map will be a part of that.
Yes, sir.
Presentation, okay.
Any other questions from the council? Any from the audience? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay, the ayes have it. Moving on to resolution eight three six one dash two five, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Brocato to execute supplemental agreement number one with the Alabama Department of Transportation for projects related to additional lanes on Valleydale Road from Caldwell Mill Road to Inverness Center Drive, additional lanes on Valleydale Road from Caldwell Mill Road to Meadow Drive Phase One, and additional lanes on Valleydale Road from Meadow Drive to Inverness Center Drive Phase Two.
Motion to approve resolution number eight three six one dash two five.
Second.
A motion the second, Mr. Reeves, tell us about this item.
Yes, sir, and this is to address the, we call it the Legacy Project, the big Valleydale Road widening project, has been around since nineteen ninety-eight. This resolution is to authorize the mayor to execute a revised utility and construction agreement with ALDOT for the relocation of the utilities and for the construction of Phase One and Phase Two of this project. The utility project will include relocating utilities as required for both phases of the construction. These utilities must be relocated before the Phase One construction can be let. The total revised estimate utility relocation is ten million dollars, this is an eighty-twenty split, eighty percent federal funds, twenty percent city funds on this, and the city's match for this will be approximately two million dollars. The utility relocation is anticipated to take for up to three years, so we're looking at completion in approximately twenty twenty-eight, probably late twenty twenty-eight. There are no additional city funds required for the utility phase of this, those funds are currently budgeted for the utility phase. The Phase One construction will include providing additional lanes on Valleydale Road, that will be five lanes and a sidewalk on the north side of Valleydale Road. Phase One will start just west of the Caldwell Mill intersection with Valleydale Road and extend to Meadow Drive, and Phase Two will start at Meadow Drive and extend just past Inverness Center Drive. The total revised estimate for the Phase One construction cost is twenty-five million dollars, or the city's match will be four point three million, and Phase Two will be twenty million, and the city's match will be four million. It is anticipated that the construction will start on Phase One in twenty twenty-eight, take three years to complete, and Phase Two is anticipated to start in twenty thirty-one and potentially be completed in twenty thirty-four. There is a current cost sharing, our funding agreement, our MOU with Shelby County, that was initiated in two thousand and eleven, their contribution to the construction phase was only a million dollars at that time, we're talking with them, and it looks positive that they will increase their contribution to help fund the phases of construction. With the current funds allocated in our budget and the previous commitment from Shelby County, the project will need approximately six million dollars, based on today's estimate, to fund construction in the future. Additional estimated funds will need to be accounted for in future budget years, and this potentially be from gas tax funds or capital projects, or I'll leave that up to the expert behind me. The number could be less, depending on Shelby County's commitment.
Any questions on this item, other than I'm glad to see them finally moving forward with, I know nineteen ninety-eight doesn't seem like that long ago, well, to me at least, but it was a long time ago. Any questions from the council?
I have a question, sir. I guess my question would be, is it, is it wise to agree to execute an agreement without the funds allocated or, you know, identifying where exactly their funds are coming from?
You know, our goal was to have a plan, you know, over, and I'll defer to her, but my question was, could we have a plan in place to where we agreed to program those funds each year to make sure they are covered in this agreement?
It's my understanding that the agreement, that this funding agreement needs to be signed in order for ALDOT to continue to work on the project, is that true?
That's correct, they have started their non-reimbursable utility relocations with Alabama Power, that's the work you see in front of Spain Park, and for them to continue their work, we need this agreement in place, so that's the reason why we brought it before you, before we had all the budgeting items worked out.
So I think we said the two construction phases should last about two years each, right?
Two to three, yes, ma'am.
And we're probably two years out.
Yes, ma'am.
At least three years out, two to three years out from needing to pay, we would pay on the front end of those construction phases, okay? So we, we believe that through a combination of our gas tax funds that could be used for, that we can squirrel away a little bit of these gas tax funds without interrupting our plan to repave streets the way that we would like to.
Yes, ma'am.
Right? And so we believe the majority of those funds could come out of gas tax funds if we set those aside, small amounts each year for that, for that project.
I guess, I don't know, I'm just, look, it's a great project, I think we all want to see this one completed, I just feel that maybe we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit without having funds identified. I'm uncomfortable to committing to an agreement without having funds identified where they're going to come from.
Well, we could go ahead and say that if we know that three years from now is when we're going to have to first front money for the construction phase of, how much was that, three point six million dollars in three years? If we know that, then, then my proposal would be to have a budget request at the, at the end of, at our next fiscal year twenty-six, for two and a half million dollars, and then to periodically, every year, squirrel away a million dollars from those gas tax funds to allocate towards this project, so that within three years, we would have accrued the amount that needed to be paid to ALDOT for that first construction phase.
Question for you, you said forty-nine fifty-one? What's the, what's the share?
Eighty-twenty.
Eighty-twenty? A hundred percent upfront? Or a twenty?
No, it's a rare twenty.
So a twenty?
The amounts we're talking about, they represent our portions.
Yeah, just strictly our portion, okay.
Right, the twenty percent.
But, just so I'll know, unless they, you might have modified, we would, when we pay all and reimburse?
We, we.
Pay a hundred percent and then reimburse twenty?
We pay our portion, our twenty percent.
Yes, sir, we would pay our portion in when the, when the project's bid. So that bid will come in, and we will pay our twenty percent.
So, I just don't know how to contract read, so is there a contract where they put it in there, bid to perform work, or we have to bid and get someone to perform work?
No, sir, it is all bid by, it'll all be bid by ALDOT.
Okay, they got two different ones, okay, you answer my question.
Any other questions on this item from the council?
Not a question, Mr. Protem, but I would like for the record to reflect that I'll abstain from voting on this item.
Any from the audience?
So, hold on, just, are we voting tonight?
Go ahead.
Are we voting tonight? Okay, I just wanted to, so, to Councilman Middlebrook's point, you are going to develop a, a schedule, a payment, can you schedule a payment on where they will become from per, because it, we have to bring our funding, what year? What year is that?
That would be twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight, yes, sir.
So we have to bring our funding twenty-eight, so billing up a schedule from here to now.
We, we think that we get approximately four million dollars in gas tax funds from the various taxes a year, and our plan to pave the streets, correct me if I'm wrong, three million is enough to keep our streets paved according to the plans that engineering has, and so one million dollars a year can be set aside or allocated.
We're going to go ahead and allocate it per year, just build out the schedule.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Reeves, if we were to continue this item till the next council meeting, for us to do our due diligence and sit down and discuss these plans of action, how would that affect the project?
I think that would be okay, if we did that, I mean, we want everyone comfortable when we vote on it, and.
I'll go with that.
Motion to continue.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to continue this item, and we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay, this motion, this item is continued.
To be placed on the next agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
To the next agenda. All right, resolution number eight four zero nine dash two five, Mr. Corley.
This resolution declares a public purpose for the repair of a drainage pipe affecting a public road right-of-way between the properties located at twenty seventy-one and twenty seventy-five Long Meadow Lane, and authorizes the repair of two corrugated metal drainage pipes located between the two above-described properties for an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve resolution eighty-four oh nine dash two five.
Second.
I have a motion second on this, on this item, Mr. Reeves?
Yes, sir, and as Mr. Corley said, Mr. Posey, it says for the repair of two forty-eight, forty-eight-inch corrugated metal pipes that have failed and collapsed on the common lot line between these two properties, this damage is causing the water to overtop and flood the road and cause damages to the infrastructure on Long Meadow Lane, you know, in the vicinity of these properties. The pipes are located in easement, but they have not been accepted by the city for perpetual maintenance. The estimated cost for this repair, as Mr. Corley said, will not exceed eighty thousand dollars, and the funds are currently budgeted in our miscellaneous drainage fund, so that's where we would tap those funds to use for this repair.
Any questions from Mr. Reeves on this item?
I got one, so, when did this happen?
I am not sure, it was brought to our attention a few weeks back, when we went out, you know, we get calls regularly to go visit sites, and when we did, we started the process to get it in front of you as a public purpose to repair.
How long will it take to fix?
We already have the quotes for this, so if it's approved, we will start that process tomorrow, to get a contractor there, to get the POs, so less than two weeks, I would say.
Any other questions?
Mr. Protem, yes, since it's in the easement, do you have the permission of the landowners to?
Yes, ma'am, we will, we'll have them sign releases, and that will, those releases will also say, city will not assume perpetual maintenance, and they'll give us the rights to be on their property and, and do the work, and they will understand that we're not accepting maintenance of it.
Do you foresee any issue obtaining that consent?
No, ma'am, we've, we've done this several times, and we've never really had any issues with anyone.
Any other questions from the council? Any from the audience? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay, the ayes have it. We'll move to number sixteen, ordinance number twenty-five two six six eight, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance amends ordinance number two sixty-three to rezone the property located at fifty-two forty-five Ross Bridge Parkway Lot Two to C Two Community Business District.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance number two-five dash two six six eight.
Second.
We have a motion the second, Mr. Martin, tell us about this ordinance.
Yes, sir, this particular piece of property, approximately two and a quarter acres in size, adjacent to Ross Bridge Parkway, just to the north from the existing commercial corridor on the west side of Ross Bridge Parkway, is sinking rezoning from our C dash P preferred commercial, which in essence is an office-only zoning district, to the C Two Community Business District, which permits a number of retail and service types of businesses. The planning commission, at their February meeting, considered this item, and it comes with a recommendation for approval to this body.
All right, any questions on this item from the council? None, any from the audience? Okay, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Sweeney?
Aye.
Counselor Driver?
Aye.
Counselor Murphy?
Aye.
Counselor Middlebrooks?
Aye.
Counselor McClinton?
Aye.
Counselor Posey?
Aye, the ayes have it, and that brings us to the end of our regular agenda. So we'll start with council comments, I want to thank the clerk for all the hard work she did between, we had a short meeting before this meeting, and then we came in here, and as you know, we are still in the process of repairing the damage done by the chipmunk that took out the AV system here, and our clerk worked very hard, very quickly, to get the microphones on, to get everything set, and then also to have a backup camera in the back, just in case we need it, to make sure that the meeting got recorded and everything got, got to us ready for the meeting, and it did take a couple of minutes, but thank you so much for that hard work and for getting that done. Anyone else have any comments? One down here, any comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
March third, I shared a letter from Hoover to ADEM about five draft NPDES permits. ADEM rejected the arguments one month later. ADEM then provided a draft NPDES permit for the city of Hoover. Hoover submitted over thirty comments, I have shared those with the council, and rejected the failed June ten, twenty twenty-two letter. To repeat, that was the sixth time that letter was rejected. One concern that I have are the legal arguments that have been presented against stormwater regulations in Hoover. Hoover typically says something like, the federal law doesn't specify that we have to do that. The federal law does say that the city is responsible for keeping stormwater pollution out of water bodies. Now, they don't say how they have to do it. For example, if the city needed to dig a ditch, the federal law doesn't say dig a ditch, it simply says stop the pollution from entering the water bodies. So it doesn't specify whether it's a ditch or a pipe or whatever it is, so that argument to keep the water bodies clean to the MEP, the maximum extent practicable, is what really holds water, so to speak. Further, I'm embarrassed by the lack of proofreading and carelessness identified by ADEM in these comments, you can see them, I've highlighted those for you, and I am concerned about wasting money on legal fees and not spending that money on stormwater management and infrastructure. Hoover is denying responsibility for stormwater, clean water, and flooding, while the city states that stormwater regulations and fees are designed to protect the health and safety and welfare of people, but they're arguing against the things that will do that for us. While people in this room may not be concerned about stormwater, the three hundred and ninety residents who were flooded on October the sixth and seventh of twenty twenty-one are concerned, drivers caught at Lorna Road and one fifty are probably concerned, and the first responders who have to help those people who are trapped in that intersection are also probably concerned, they care. Our lakes are full of sediment, debris, and turbid water. Each year, the cost of repairing these things goes up, so putting it off is a poor financial decision. The city has failed to hold developers accountable for long-term maintenance of stormwater management, and that means those costs will come back to the taxpayers. That's not a good move either. Rather than fighting over requirements that have been in effect for fifteen or more years, it would be better to spend that money on repairing stormwater infrastructure, you hear how small the budget is. Is avoiding stormwater responsibility what Hoover wants to be known for? Question everything.
Ma'am, I will take this home, as I'm sure the rest of the body will, and read through it and, and digest these items, thank you so much. Any other questions, comments from the audience? Okay, hearing none, we are adjourned, thank you for coming.